Would you state your name for the record?
Yes, I'm Daniel Martinez. And I wrote a second letter and emailed it to all of the commission and the city manager on that old Raton Pass road and what's been happening up there. And I was up there Sunday, and I was escorted. Somebody picked me up about halfway through that road beyond the gate. And they followed me, and if I slowed down, they slowed down; if I sped up, they sped up; if I stopped, they stopped. And they followed me all the way to the end and back. Not all the way back, but about halfway. And there appears to be either more vandalism going on there now than has been going on in the past, or somebody is placing props there. By props, I mean there's two bent gates that were associated. They're placed right next to what appears to be a new gate that has been installed along the edges, not at one blocking the road. So it's my opinion that they're either props put there by somebody wanting to illustrate the vandalism that's going on, or it's vandalism in reality. You know, I'm not sure. My concern is that the city commission has seemed to do nothing. And I would venture a guess that the city commission is jeopardizing their authority and their respect for the city and its laws and its police by not doing anything, by allowing this thing to progress to the point that it has progressed. And there are cameras all over the place up there, and like I said, I was followed, and I know I was followed because I made a point to stop and start, slow down and speed up, and that was what was happening behind me. And it was a black truck with Texas license plates. You know, what's going on there is not appropriate. It's not appropriate for what was going on there before, not now, and it ain't going to get any better. And the city, and the city council, and the city manager are responsible for that, for not having responded to that in the first place. I don't think that that would be allowed of any other citizen in any other situation were I to do the same thing, or anybody else. And like I said, I think it's jeopardizing the authority and the respect that the city should, the city council, the city manager should have. Anyway, that's it.
Is there anyone else, Laura?
Good evening, commissioners, mayor, and Trish. Laura Brewer, and I'm with Raton Chamber and Raton Ambassadors and a business owner here in town. I would just, can you hear me all right?
I can hear you.
I'm sliding.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention that the Raton ambassadors have been very, very busy recently. We have lots of ribbon cuttings coming up, and I wanted to advise our commissioners of that. We had one scheduled actually for tomorrow at the World Journal here on Second Street. However, the owners, Brian and Gretchen Orr from Walsenburg, had called and would like to postpone because they wanted to be here. And they weren't able to be here on Wednesday because that's the day that put the newspaper to bed, as you call it. And so we tentatively have scheduled that for Friday, the 24th, at noon at World Journal here. And so that will be one of the ribbon cuttings. And I wanted just all the audience to know that it has been postponed from tomorrow at noon until next Friday, the 24th. And then also, we do have coming up other ribbon cuttings, and they will be announced as we go along. And some of them are the used furniture, G.G.'s used furniture. We'll have a ribbon cutting there. We've got one scheduled for the Art of Snacks on First Street. We have a secondary one scheduled for the Doggy Styles by Kathleen because we had one, I guess, last year, and there weren't very many people in attendance, if any. And so we decided on behalf of, you know, good sportsmanship and cooperation with our city and our business that we would do a second ribbon cutting. So that one would be this month, also the 20th. So just wanted to mention that we have a lot of things going on. We're going to be scheduling a ribbon cutting every week from now until we catch up because there are several new businesses that actually need to be promoted, one of them being Domino's on the corner down on Second Street and the Clayton Road. So there are several coming up that will keep you abreast of the situation. And just to let you know that we have added two board members. I can't remember if I mentioned this last time, but we do have Dee Burks, who is the human resource person from MCMC, and Mary Gans, who is the DWI for Covax County and also CrossFit. We do have another letter of interest from a very prominent person that I'm not going to say anything yet because our board has not actually discussed and voted on that. But we do have another person coming on board, and that will fill our board for their position. So just wanted to let you know some good things are happening, and we're looking forward to cooperating and working with all the entities in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission at this time? Sing none will go on with our business. Approval of the February 28th regular commission meeting minutes.
Madam Mayor, there's a correction needs to be done on item six, B, five lines, fifth line down. It should state, it states, "Sir David Pencino is a treasurer for the RDS." If that is incorrect, it's David Watson.
I read that last night. It's all right to me either. And I believe on, I don't know what page, the third page, "Meeting minutes as amended." It says, "As approved."
No, I'll move to approve as amended.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the regular commission meeting minutes as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliberate an act on juvenile justice program budget adjustment number two. And I don't understand this at all.
I didn't figure it out either. I still want to go under that.
Madam Commissioner, in your packet this evening, this is a budget adjustment for our juvenile justice grant. They are requesting, these are just line item adjustments, so the restorative justice program has had low referrals this year. And so in order to ensure that we spend down the grant at the end of the fiscal year, it's been recommended that they move funds out of the restorative justice program into the girls' circle program. And that would allow them to, let's see, and then we would also put $3,475 also in the boys' council program as well. The restorative justice, I don't know if that's the part that's confusing to you, where they have pre-circle, post-circle, and circles, or do the amounts not add up?
No, it was confusing because the existing budget was $300, and the amended budget was $300.
I think the confusion comes in the highlighting.
With the highlighting.
Probably our fault. We assumed that's where the adjustments are.
The only reason that's highlighted is because when we do budget adjustments, we cannot decrease that particular line item under $300. So you'll see it's highlighted below just to kind of alert us that if we are making budget adjustments, that one cannot go below $300.
They've got to spend that.
So that was the only reason for the highlighted line there.
And I agree with what Neil said. We looked at the highlight and not the increase.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, we're not increasing or decreasing. It's just moving monies from the restorative justice line item budget into girls' circle and boys' council.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this budget adjustment for the juvenile justice program.
Okay. We have a motion and two seconds to approve the budget adjustment number two for the juvenile justice program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
We have a discussion on the legal opinion on the Raton Pass-Scenic Highway. I missed, I jumped ahead. Okay, I'm sorry. Deliverate an act on the recommendation from the Lodger's Tax Board. Mr. Berry?
Madam Commissioner, you have a memorandum and a recommendation in your packet that states the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board met on March 6, 2017, and they made a recommendation to the commission that $5,000 be awarded to Raton Chamber, which had proposed using the funding towards a printed community guide. I was not at the meeting. We do have Laura Brewer present from the chamber who could maybe answer some questions in regard to that. And then I think that Commissioner Chavez was present at the meeting as well. But I would tell you that the requested amount was much greater than the $5,000, and there was a lively discussion of the community guide and the potential cost of the community guide. And the recommendation of the board is for the $5,000. That's brought to the commission for your consideration.
Do you have anything to add?
No, it was just like he said, it was a spirited conversation, and the board decided to not issue the original amount that was asked for and made a motion to pass the $5,000 towards the printing and continued printing of the community guide.
Okay. And if I read this correctly, that means...
No, I believe that we understand the reasoning behind the Lodger's Tax decision, and we feel that from this point forward, we just need a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do to not only regain their trust, but also the trust of the community and the city. And we plan to do our best with what has been suggested that we receive. And we will try to make up the difference between that amount and what we'll actually take to get a good Raton Community Guide published. We will try to make up the difference between that with ad sales, and then, you know, if we have to do some fundraising, we'll do that. So we respect the Lodger's Tax decision, and we're happy to report this.
And if I read this right, that $5,000 can only be used for the community guide. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, Madam Mayor, yes. And I would further add that, you know, as a follow-up, I think that internally, we've discussed maybe spending more time with Lodger's Tax Board and the applicants for Lodger's Tax in a pre-fiscal year budget, so a budget hearing type of process that we would typically have here, where Lodger's Tax really kind of outlines through the year, at least in general terms, where Lodger's Tax or budgeted Lodger's Tax might go. I don't know that that's the final word, but, and applicants can generally tell the board what they're planning during the year, and it's just greater communications and greater planning. And also, I think that it is important that we get the board filled. We have a vacancy on the board, and we've had several of those. And there is an application for the board in front of you tonight. But sometimes we've had the issue of having a quorum with that board. And so we need all of the members, all the seats filled, to have our best chance of having a meeting on time because sometimes these get kicked down the road a month or two months with just people being gone. And people on the board are business people. They're working. They have other obligations. So we're bringing that to you as well tonight. But that's a follow-up to what we've discussed.
Laura?
I would also like to mention that evidently, this was before I came on the board, but evidently, they had approached the Lodger's Tax, and because of the lack of support, there was no action taken prior to this actually taking place. And so there were some procedures that were not followed accurately or directly, I believe. I can't really attest it that much because I wasn't there at the time. However, in having been on the chamber board previously, many years ago, well, a few years ago, I know that the Raton Community Guide was a collaborative effort between the city, Raton Main Street, and the chamber. And so that really hadn't taken place, and I'm not sure why, but I would like to see it become a collaborative effort because it really is meant to promote our community, our city, and all of us that live here, and all of the organizations that work and do business here. So I will be reaching out to Raton Main Street to start discussing how we can work together, but we don't intend to take your funds. So we just want to be able to really put a good effort towards the information that will be in the community guide, this text, the history, all of the wonderful assets that we have in this community. And it's best to have more people working on that because we all have our own slant of how to approach things and how to get things done. So that's the only thing I wanted to add to this.
May I ask, are you starting from scratch on that?
No, actually, because of my history with the Raton Community Guide and the work that I had done on it previously, and it was back in 2011, I think, when I had an actual work on it. And I do have all of that information on my computer because at the time, the chamber needed half the software that they needed in order to do some of the publication for that. And so I do have all of that information from 2011 at least that we can use and edit and then plug into the information.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, what's the estimated cost on this guide?
Well, again, it will end up how many pages? We had hoped to do 48 pages, which was double the amount of what we had done in 2011. So we'll probably end up having to do more like 24, maybe 30 pages. At that, it would probably cost around $20,000. And that's because of the type of paper that we're requesting and, you know, the amount of graphics and text that will be included.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
I make a motion to approve recommendation to the Lodger's Tax Board.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation of $5,000 to the Raton Chamber for the community guide. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Discuss legal opinion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Before we go on to this, I'd like to, at this point, withdraw abstain to item 6B of the agenda, 6D item.
Discuss the legal opinion of the Raton Pass-Scenic Highway restrictions on access. No action will be taken. Go ahead, Mr. Berry.
Madam Commissioner, just to review this agenda item, some months ago, the commission had been approached by property owners that had pointed out that there are chronic problems on the Old Pass Road, the Scenic Highway. And those problems consist of vandalism, graffiti, illegal dumping, damage to property. There's a lot of kind of indiscriminate shooting going on on the pass. There are fires being set, campfires of those natures, use of off-road vehicles, trespassing, where off-road vehicles are going onto private lands. And it's stemming from the road that is owned by the city. So we had talked about that here, and the commission had directed that a legal opinion be prepared to look into the possibility of regulating access to the Old Pass Highway. So I had talked to an attorney in Santa Fe, John Uten. John is an attorney that has done various tasks for the city of Raton over a number of years. And in your packet, you have that opinion from the attorney. It's a rather lengthy opinion. And what a legal opinion is, is research on applicable laws, statutes, ordinances, and also precedent case history or court decisions that might apply to our circumstance or be similar to our circumstance. So the attorney kind of walks you through that exercise of evaluating laws or ordinances or rules that may apply, and then other court decisions that may be similar to our situation here. And I think it's going to take a while to get through the legal opinion and come to an understanding. And I wanted to take the opportunity here to give that to the commission, let you study on that. And if you have any questions on the opinion, we can pose that to the attorney. If you have any follow-up items, we can do that. Now, when I met with the attorney, we had to provide some stipulations to him, and I did lay out for the attorney an idea that I think had been given to us by Commissioner Chavez. The premise was that access to the highway be regulated, but that everybody really would have access through a check-in process. So it's similar to what you might see at a state park where you would obtain a permit for entering the state park or a national park or something similar to that, but through a gate. So it would tend to regulate uses and allow us to have some knowledge of what was going on on the Old Pass Road. You know, once a vehicle gets around the bend there, it's just not something that you can regulate here. And we had stated at the time, we're chronically short of police officers. It's really not something that's a priority for sending officers up there when there's a lot of law enforcement issues in town. We also talked about just maintenance of the road in general and how it's, we do occasional maintenance on the road. As a matter of fact, we had a road grader up there during the past week working on the road. But it's, given all of the other public works demands that we have in town, again, not a high priority. And so the legal opinion is really written around that premise that there would be, as the attorney states, unfettered access to property owners, unfettered access to emergency and official vehicles, and permitted vehicular access to the general public. There would also be unfettered access to hikers, to people on mountain bikes, non-motorized type of uses. So he's written his opinion around that premise, and of course, that doesn't obligate the commission in any way. That is, if you want something else evaluated, he will certainly do that. If you have some other questions, he'll certainly look at that. But we took the opportunity tonight to just bring this to the commission, and I think action would subsequently follow. And I'll hold up there and answer any questions that you might have.
I think it is a well-written opinion, and I concur with the idea that Mr. Chavez came up with. My only, I guess the permits would be issued at C-Hall?
Yeah, obviously, there's a lot of details to work out with that plan, and I think that with your direction, we would try to really drill down on those details at the March 28 meeting. Obviously, a number of questions on how that's going to be implemented. But it does anticipate that the city would, you would check in with the city.
Okay. So if you're going to do something on the weekend, you need to check in by Friday?
Well, that's going to be a question, is what hours do we do that? Now, we do operate 24-hour staff here, so maybe we can, you know, make some arrangement there. Maybe we do have set hours, and you have to see a certain person. Those are all things, I think, that, there's a number of details that we would have to follow up to implement that plan. And of course, it's something that we haven't talked about up until now. So I think we can. Now, I would just kind of, I think, read the recommendations from Mr. Uten in the last page.
If I could interrupt you just a second here.
Sure.
And Mr. Martinez, you and I talked about this prior to this, but the one thing that I did not ever want, or I do not propose to ever close that road or sell it or give it away. I propose accessibility. And what I, as I originally told them, is that what I wanted, accountability for anybody that's on that property. And that when I talked to Mr. Berry and said that we needed this legal opinion to make sure, there's a lot more that I'll bring out when I present it to the rest of the commissioners before the 28th meeting. But I believe that this is an adequate means to protect the area. We have, I hate to go into it at this point, but I've been up there, and we have, the iridium layer is a very important aspect that's been destroyed. The one picnic ground that is up there, they tore the table down, found a fire left burning overnight at one time. But I think that we need some accountability. And I'll leave it at that until we can talk this and I can present the whole program that I have in mind.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Sir?
The question being that the opinion was requested, and the information on limited access or permitted access was what the lawyer was given to look at. Where is that permitted access to start? Let me ask the question fully. Is it going to start at the bottom of Goat Hill? Is it going to start at the end of the old pavement where it curves to go to the actual Goat Hill itself? Is it going to start at the top of the pass when you first reach the top? Or is it going to start where that gate that was placed there without permission of the city? If I'm correct, if I was advised correct, without permission of the city, where is that access proposed and this opinion referring to?
Okay. Want me to answer that? My proposal was to put it where that turn starts, the pavement ends, and you can go to Goat Hill, the gate would be right there. That's where I proposed the gate.
And that's where the opinion is, that's where the opinion is based on?
And I'll answer that question. The location is not specified. I think the assumption is that the regulation, the structure, would start at the beginning of the property, yes.
At the what property?
Well, so included is the Goat Hill Road, and I would anticipate, that's a lot easier to monitor. That's probably going to be left open, I would think. But that seems like a logical location. But that's not specified in the legal opinion. It's not information that's given to the attorney. He's looking at, in general, can the city regulate that and what rules apply to that? So really, that doesn't come into play on the legal opinion, and that would be, what the legal opinion does say is that the authority lies with the city commission.
And I don't think that that's ever been in question, not in my book. It may have been in question in your book because it appears to me that the city has tremendous amounts of authority as it relates to property that belongs to the city. And on closing access, restricting access, even locking the gate, that has never been the question, or that has never been my argument. My argument has been is that the city allowed a private citizen, an individual who is not even a city resident, if I'm correct, to gate and sign that road. And as such, that is a provocation to some people. And my guess right now is that that is part of the problem that you're seeing as we go forward now because of those gates that are out there. They're either props, or somebody actually pulled them off the hinges because they're still there. You know, I mean, at least they were there Sunday.
Mr. Martinez, I went up last week, was it last week?
Yes.
With Mr. Berry, and we looked around. One, that's not a locked gate, so it doesn't totally deny access. It just slows traffic down. But you're right, that was not put up with city permission.
It's intimidation with the signs there.
However, our, I think, I think ours, meaning yours and mine, and probably everybody concerned is, to protect that area. And so the reason we saw... And so, the reason we sought a legal opinion and why we've been working on this is to maintain the proper procedure in moving forward so that we're not totally denying access to the public, but we're able to maintain some, you know, keep the area beautiful without it being torn apart. There are a lot of gates up there that have been taken apart by just people going up there.
And I'm not denying that there is vandalism up there. My problem is that that vandalism is really no worse than placing that gate there. That gate is meant to intimidate people, and the signs in front of it are meant to intimidate people. And the intimidation is meant to restrict the access beyond that gate. That's the only purpose that I can see, and I would ask somebody else if there is a purpose beyond that.
Let me just say that the city is aware of the gate, and we are working on the appropriate way of dealing with that. And it's not gone unaware. It's just there... You have to move in particular ways unless you want to end up in court over something that, you know, if you jump into something, you end up in court.
I understand that. And I hope that...
We're trying to deal with this in an...
I hope you also understand that by not enforcing city codes, you could end up in court.
Well, that's what we're working on trying to do. And let's let Mr. Barry proceed with talking about the recommendations of Mr. Uten.
Well, I would just say from my perspective that, you know, the problem is a chronic one. And as we pointed out early in the process, the city commissioned, it talked about this 20 years ago, it talked about this 15 years ago, and it really has not been resolved. And the problems have continued during that time. And there... I think there was a thought that if we construct the picnic tables, we construct the public areas, maybe tourism will increase, you know, more people will go up there, and that might decrease vandalism. I think that was maybe a thought in there, and it really hasn't been effective. I think the vandalism has continued. The gate, I don't know what the intent of the gate is. It's not a city measure, as you know. I don't know that it's the problem. It is a symptom of the problem. And it's, you know, the real root of the problems go on, which we're looking at addressing and talking about addressing, and I think it addresses all of that. But the other problem is there's confrontation up there, and that's a dangerous situation. So, I think that we do... You said we have responsibility. I don't disagree with that. And I think we have to come up with a common sense solution. And I think there's a little compromise. But I think emotions tend to run high. I think they did 15 years ago. And like I say, people are confronting each other, so that's not what we want.
I would suggest that if a gate is placed there and if access is restricted to the citizens, because nobody else is going to have restrictions other than the citizens and the general public, everybody else appears to be able to go back there, that a sign be placed on the gate saying that it is public property behind the sign, you are authorized to go, but you need a permit. That would be, in my case, at the very least of what can be done so people are not intimidated.
But I'm sure that that'll be addressed when we talk before, you know that I did call you back. When we talked before, I told you that we need some patience until we find out all of these things. And then I am positive, it's not going to get everybody happy with the situation, but it's going to protect the area, and it's going to protect the citizens, and it's going to protect the property owners. And that place will be open from now on forever.
The...
But that gate will be removed.
The access, the public access to public land is a primary concern, not just in New Mexico, Colfax County, it's a concern all over the western part of the country. People are blocking public access by whatever means is possible, whether it's working with city councils, working with county commissions, just ignoring the fact and placing signs there. Signs and a gate, in my book, are meant to intimidate, and it is intimidating. I know that when I invited my wife to go back up there, she said she didn't want to go anymore because she doesn't appreciate me pushing open that gate. And now she thinks that I'm doing something wrong there. And that intimidation, that is what is meant by that gate and that signs on either side, bright and bold. And that's it, I think.
And I will kind of run through the recommendations here. And Mr. Uten says that at the conclusion of the legal opinion, in order to authorize redesignation of and regulation of access to the road, the city should carry out the following. One, adopt an ordinance setting forth a factual basis for the proposal, showing that the ordinance is based on a public purpose, including protection of important public values and promotion of public health and safety. And number two, set forth in the ordinance the manner by which the public will continue to have access, specifically providing that non-vehicular access will continue to be afforded, such as to hikers and bicyclists and other non-motorized parties, and by providing vehicular access to the public according to reasonable permitting procedures. Three, provide in the ordinance that emergency vehicles and other official vehicles, including county and city vehicles, would have immediate access in order to carry out governmental functions and life safety purposes. In support of the ordinance, the city should coordinate with the county and obtain any authorization needed to regulate access to that portion of the road serving the unincorporated county. Four, obtain consent from landowners whose lands are accessed by the old road and establish a procedure for providing automated access to them. So, that's the conclusion of the recommendations you have.
I think just what gets lost also is just beyond where that gate is, which I agree that gate is intimidating, and it shouldn't have been put up. But at the same time, just beyond that, City of Raton property ends. The only public access is actually that road. You don't have access to the land to the sides of it. And I think a lot of people... And that's where some of the landowners are being with their concerns. Their fences are being cut. People are taking four-wheelers down trails and that, and that's their concern. I think that's just got to be stressed as we move forward as well. But I agree, there should be access, like Mr. Chavis said, to the end, but it needs to be regulated.
Do you have to say something? I would like to mention that I've spoken with Mr. Barry about the gate and the road and the iridium layer and all of that because I had an interest in it as well because of the Santa Fe Trail and the historic significance of the Old Pass Road and the iridium layer and other things there. And so, I agree that they need to be preserved. And so, I would like to see something done to preserve that area. And I foresee that it could be a wonderful boon to our community and in the way of providing tours to the iridium layer and up to the Old Pass toll place and back again. And that would be permitted. So, it could be something that could be a very positive effect to our city in the way of tourism. And I would just suggest that if the permitting process were done properly and even available in the weekends, maybe through the police department because they're open 24 hours, seven days a week, you know, so there are options available. So, I do agree that the iridium layer and the Old Pass Road should be preserved and protected because of its historic significance. I would like to see that gate in particular taken down because it was not put up with your permission. And if we did one down there where it divides to the Old Pass and the Goat Hill, which might be best because the road past that needs a great deal of work, it doesn't have the road barriers, you know, on the side, and so it might be better to just do tours up there or, you know, allow individuals with a permit. So, just my two cents. Thank you.
One other thing is that if there is a problem enforcing the littering and shooting and dumping trash up there, if there is a problem with that, a gate, no matter where you put it, is not going to solve that because what's going to happen if I go behind the gate? If you don't have the wherewithal, for whatever reason, to patrol and enforce those regulations now, what gives this commission the idea that you will be able to enforce somebody going up, opening the gate without a permit, going all the way to the end and coming back?
If our proposal is agreed upon, they're not going to be able to get through that gate without a slide card.
Without the permit.
Oh, so it'll be locked?
No, it's not going to be locked.
Not that gate.
No, 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 I understand. The gate, you're proposing that the gate that is put there will be locked, and the opening mechanism will be...
It will have an opening.
But it will be locked, is what you're saying?
Yes.
The reason I brought... When I brought this to Mr. Barry, I said that we need a legal opinion. That's why I wanted to wait for this. But at the next meeting, we'll present the photos, the drawing of how the proposed gate and everything. I think we could bring it... I can bring it to the rest of the commissioners at that time at the next meeting. And it's more about... You said if somebody goes up there and dumps? In my opinion, it's more about accountability. All right? Right now, if I go up there and I throw all my trash out, nobody knows I'm up there. But if we have accountability, we'll say it was cleaned yesterday, and we let Ron Chavis, the only guy that went in there, and we found his beer bottles and his picnic trash, then we have some accountability. And that is what... One of the main things that I'm stressing in my proposal is accountability access, not blocking it for access. Everybody should get to enjoy that, but accountability access to that area. And that's going to be my proposal.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would also tell you that I had a meeting on Raton Depot with Jeff Papas and other people. But Jeff is the director of Historic Preservation Division for the state of Mexico. And I did ask him about the designation on the Old Pass and on Raton Pass. And I told him that we were considering some action. And Mr. Papas told me that the state Historic Preservation, first of all, he said that the designation is kind of a generic designation for the Raton Pass. It's not specific to the I-25 corridor or to the Old Scenic Highway or to a specific section of the road. It's a generic designation of the Santa Fe Trail, actually, including the Raton Pass. And he said that there's not a regulatory mechanism through his department. So, what the legal opinion states is that you do have the authority of police power, and that's been verified by Historic Preservation Division. And also, we talked about that previously with the Goat Hill designation. That's a federal designation. And it also stated that you had authority to regulate activities there.
Thank you. Is there anything else anyone wants to say? Next item of business, deliberate an act on a public celebration permit for Raton Main Street's annual spring into hops and vine event on Saturday, April 22, 2017, Sierra Blanca Brewery. Do you want to address this?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, the City Manager. We're happy to be here to announce our upcoming... Well, organizing what up?
Fifth Annual.
Fifth Annual Hops and Vine Event, and it will be at the museum as we've done in the past. We've invited... Well, we've sent out invites to several breweries and wineries, but these were the two that have replied and committed and submitted their permits so that they can bring their product for all of us to taste and enjoy.
And for spring, we can all use a drink here and there. But the event is on April 22, and Sierra Blanca Brewery is out of Moriarty, and Black Smuggler's Winery is out of Bosque. So, these are new winery and brewery that we haven't had here before. We also have a silent auction, and it's a fundraiser for Raton Main Street. And we also have catering, so we'll have some good...
We have appetizers and booze and everything happening.
And of course, the site itself is beautiful enough for people to go and check out. Do you have any questions to this?
No, it's a good event.
It's a great event, yeah.
We appreciate you being winos.
Yes. Thank you.
We know how to find the good wine and beer.
We'll leave that one alone. Now, Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the permit for Raton Main Street's annual spring into hops and vine event on April 22 for both Sierra Blanca Brewery and Black Smuggler Winery.
I have a motion and a second to allow the public celebration permit... I don't know what else to say. For the Raton Main Street's annual spring into hops and vines event with Sierra Blanca Brewery and Black Smuggler Winery. Can we have a report?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacama?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zegada?
Yes.
Mayor M.
Yes, motion... Both motions passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you there.
Hope to see you all there.
Is that motion for both?
Yes, that's for both.
Deliberate an act on appointments to city boards. The first one is Raton Water Board. It's Joe Gallardi. Comments from anybody?
Mr. Gallardi's served quite a long time on that, and he's a good asset for that board, I believe.
I think I'm going to take him on one too. Yeah. Furman Ullibery for the Raton Housing Authority. He's another one that has served on this board.
He's been on for a while and a good asset to that board.
All right. And William H. Daly for Labor Management Relations Board. I don't know this gentleman.
I do, and imagine you have two.
I know Mr. Daly well. He's a... His resume speaks, you know, he's a Harvard trained lawyer, but I think he'd be perfect for the Labor Relations Board.
Okay. And we have one applicant for the Lodgers Tax Board. My only question is, what positions on the board are we trying to fill? Are we trying to fill motel owners or people at large or...
There's one seat open. It is for someone in the tourism industry.
Okay.
In a tourist-related business.
Jessica is part owner of Enchanted Grounds as well as she's working with the Center for Sustainability and who intend to work with tourism-related activities at the Center for Sustainability. So, I think she's a good candidate.
And you feel she fills that qualification?
I think she does. Generally, a restaurateur, we would count as working in the tourism industry, see a lot of visitors down. We have the two required lodgers. Seats are filled. We have the at-large seat is filled, and the tourism seat is open.
Okay, all right. For the Lodgers Tax Board, it's Jessica Bartfeld, and like they were saying, she owns... She's a part owner in Enchanted Grounds, and she works for the Committee for Center for Sustainability.
Madam Mayor, I think that we accept these board applications.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve Joe Gallardi to the Raton Water Board, Furman Ullibery to the Raton Housing Authority...
Ulibri to the Raton Housing Authority, William Daley to the Labor Management Relations Board, and Jessica Barfield to the Lodgers Tax Board. Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zabada?
Yes.
Mayor Mazz?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations to all applicants, and thank you for your application and your interest in city boards. City Manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. We've followed the activities of the legislature. I'd tell you that the legislature will adjourn on March 28, and it reports are that there's a pretty good possibility of a special session. I think the special session would be limited to the state budget issues. Looks like there's some disagreement there as far as how the state budget comes out. You have on your, in front of you, New Mexico Municipal League memo, the District III meeting that annually will follow adjournment of the legislature, is scheduled to be held in Clayton. That's April 13 at the Hurstine Museum. That's on, the address is 22 South Second Street. If any Commissioners are interested in attending that meeting, if you would coordinate with Tricia, she will get you registered, we'll talk about transportation. You recall at that meeting, the Municipal League will come and give us information on what did happen at the legislature, what bills got signed. There are a number of bills out there that are of specific interest to municipalities, and they'll review those. They'll also review where we're at on some of our insurance issues through self-insurers. The Economic Vitality Team has an action planning session that's actually going on, this is Raton Main Street and New Mexico Main Street. They have met earlier in the day. They plan on meeting here at nine o'clock. They have invited all of the city Commissioners and city officials. We will be talking about a memorandum of understanding or memorandum of agreement that we have with Main Street and renewal of that MOA or MOU, whichever that is. And we'll talk about financing strategies for the Great Blocks Project. We'll also talk financing strategies for private buildings and businesses. And this is really related to our downtown revitalization efforts. So they would really like to get your opinion and have discussion with you. We do have a quorum posted for the meeting tomorrow. It's expected to last from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. We'll be here, we'll actually be in our conference room. The State Armory Board is scheduled to meet March 24. I've asked to be on the agenda. That'll be held in Santa Fe. I'd like to go down to the Armory Board meeting and talk to them about the Raton Readiness Center or the Flight School, as we call it now. And it's my understanding that the National Guard has tried to remediate lead contamination, that's in the shooting range in the building. They did have a contractor on site some months ago to clean up lead. They had another contractor come back and do some follow-up testing, and they had a small area that did not pass. So the contractor will be back on March 22 to complete the cleanup. And then again, it would have to be tested and cleared before they will give you a deed to the building. But I do want to go down with State Armory Board and discuss that with them. As you remember, in January of 2016, we signed a one-year lease agreement. It's non-monetary, no money changes hands, and the lease agreement was, period of one year, has expired. It does have a provision in the lease agreement that we would continue on month-to-month under the terms of that lease agreement. And the State Armory Board has offered, they'll sign another annual agreement with you if you'd like, or we can continue month-to-month. The State Armory Board meets every three months, so if we got the cleanup completed, it's possible that at the June meeting, they would vote to execute the deed and the city would have ownership of the building. So it's just to touch base with them. I'll talk about project developments briefly here. There have been repairs underway at the Lake Malloy Dam spillway, pretty brief, it took a couple of days to complete the, those repairs. It was done by a contractor, Hasi Concrete, that's been working in the area. Hasi also had completed structural repairs at the pre-sedimentation building. That's at the intake area of our Cimarron line, it's a couple of miles west of Cimarron, and we had had some settling on the building. So those repairs are now complete. I've been working with Raton Water Works and Riverbend Engineering on a permit closure process. That is related to the sedimentation impoundments that were constructed in Sugar Creek Canyon following the track fire. So we're now trying to, we had to permit those through the Army Corps of Engineers in 2011, and we're now going through a process to close that permit. And there is going to be some reclamation work required on some of those. So Riverbend Engineering has been contracted to put together a reclamation plan, which we've submitted to the Corps, and we're waiting for their approval. And then that reclamation work will take place this summer. And that's all I have, Mayor.
You don't have any questions for Mr. Berry? Is there any other business to come before this body? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.